And we are also joined today by our Senator and our delegate. Gentlemen, would you like to come up for a photo?
And Dr. Swaples, do you or anybody else have anything you'd like to say?
Just that, so Cornerstone Family Medicine is Dr. Crowell, Dr. Ramos now, Randy Paul, and Sean Amider, and our CEO Evan Salopoulos. And we've been doing family medicine and obstetrics here at the hospital for 30 years. God has blessed us also with being able to be right there on campus of the hospital there with a great building he provided several years ago to weather the storm. And so it's been great. This is an incredible community to be able to practice medicine in. It's just, the hospital is wonderful, the community is wonderful, very accepting, and of us as family docs. So, we love it here and we hope for many more years.
Thank you.
Well said. I think we've got picture taken right here. Whoa, whoa, get comfortable.
Act like you like. Johnny, can you slide forward a little bit?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem. Appreciate you saying that. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is from the Department of Financial Services Purchasing Division. We have some bids. Mr. Knoll, what do you have for us?
Yes, sir. The first one is bid number 23-1017, Local Strategic Highway Safety Plan. One bid was received from Mean and Hunt in the amount of $40,000. So, the recommendation is to award Mean and Hunt the bid to develop the local strategic highway safety plan for Garrett County. This project is actually funded through the Maryland Department of Transportation Highway Safety, so there will be no cost to the county for this project. And again, that is $40,000.
Question. We'll take both of these together. What's the other one?
The second bid is number 23-026. This is for trash services for county facilities. In this particular bid, we have combined all the dumpster-type trash services into one contract. We had received two bids. The first from Perry Solid Waste Disposal in the amount of $28,757.56. And the second one from Sunrise Sanitation Services in the amount of $35,769.24. So after reviewing the bids for compliance, the recommendation is to award the bid to Pro Disposal of Maryland LLC. They're doing business as Perry Solid Waste Disposal for $28,757.56. By combining these bids, we've actually saved about 10% over what we were paying in the past.
Question on that. So basically, the second bid for trash services, each department managed their own dumpsters, and by consolidating them under one contract, we were able to save money to the tune of 10% overall. So, great job on that. If there are no questions on the RFPs, I will take a motion to accept bid number 23-1017, Local Strategic Highway Safety Plan for $40,000 for Mean and Hunt, and bid number 23-1026, Trash Services for County Facilities to Perry Solid Waste Disposal for $28,757.56.
Motion to accept.
I will second that. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda, I do want to welcome Delegate Jim Heimall and Senator Mike McKay. Thanks for coming. Every year, we are fortunate to have our delegation from Annapolis join us and go over some of our legislative requests and talk about things that are coming up that could impact us. So, welcome gentlemen, and thank you. And before we get into our requests, I'll turn it over to you if there's anything that you guys would like to say or anything going on you feel important to share.
So, thank you very much, Commissioners, for the opportunity to talk to you and obviously the citizens of Garrett County. You know, just a couple different things that's going to happen in the General Assembly this year. It's going to be a very tight year. We have structural deficits. We left Annapolis with $463 million surplus, and now we're at $1.4 billion deficit. We will have one more Spending Affordability Committee report that will come out in early January to kind of see exactly where the revenues are. There has been talking about refinancing some of our capital projects to be able to give us a little bit more wiggle room. What that means is the local bond initiatives, those are bond initiatives that different groups in each of the individual legislative districts ask for. It's going to be tight. It's just going to be tight. The first year, the governor's done a really good job, but he's gotten his, getting his feet wet and trying to understand it wasn't 100% his budget. It was the Hogan administration that kind of prepared it, and then they addressed their needs and that kind of stuff. So this year is their full budget for them, and we're going to see some of the priorities that come from the Moore administration. I do believe that you are going to see some legislation, some bipartisan legislation, when it comes to violent offenders and some juvenile crimes. Look, we understand that people should get a second chance, but it's the fourth and fifth and sixth, and in this case, a teen who had carjacked 15 times and was still let back out on the street. So, somebody needs to get Johnny some services, or at least a bus fare, so he can stop carjacking. But, that being the case, just some things that I plan to work on in the legislature this year. Normally, having rural health has always been a part of what we do. We don't have any dental legislation this year, even though I'm called Senator Smiles now, not the Dental Delegate. But we will be doing some things when it comes to telepharmacy. A lot of our pharmacists, local rural, are really having a hard time being able to stay in business. And I believe telepharmacy would be able to give them the ability to be able to help out with prescribing drugs and some different things, and it would be able to pinpoint a revenue stream for them that our rural pharmacists are having a problem with and competing against the big boys. And so, that's one of the things that we're going to be working on. We're also going to be working on our opioid problems. Neighbor Allegheny County is the number one death rate for Marylanders who are addicted to opioids and have unfortunately passed away. We're going to do a particular piece of legislation that trains ER doctors to be able to administer Suboxone. So, right now, if you get picked up and you go to the detention center and they determine that you are addicted to opioids, a 2016 bill will automatically put you on medication to handle that. And that's the first step to help somebody. You go to the ER, let's say they've brought you back, and you, there's nobody having an education with you at that point. You've had a near-death experience, they brought you to life, they just send you home. This particular piece of legislation would train docs and nurses to be able to educate people, would not require them, but would help them to take the first step of taking the Suboxone and then hopefully be able to, because that, what that ends up doing is if they, two days later or a day later, try to take an opioid instead of getting high to get violently sick, and it's the first step to help somebody with counseling and that kind of stuff. That money would come from the Opioid Restitution Fund, which is a, pretty much an ongoing stream, and that's $16 million total. But one of the things that, through that piece of legislation in 2016 that required detention centers and our corrections to administer this, the state was supposed to pay for it, and the state has not paid for it. The numbers that I'm getting from Allegheny County is the tune of about $800,000 is what the local detention center is having to pay for that program. And so we're going to actually, with this particular bill, add on that $1 million is going to go to the detention centers that are administering this. So, that's just a couple different things that I'm going to be working on. Look forward to hearing your legislative requests. Just remind everybody, on December the 7th, at the college at 8:00 in the morning? I think it's 8:00 in the morning. The Chamber is hosting a pre-legislative meeting that is open to the public. So, they would like reservations, let you know, because I think they're going to have like a continental breakfast, some bagels and that kind of stuff. One of the members has graciously sponsored the event, so it is open to the public for anybody, but especially Chamber members are invited to come. Last I'll leave you with is if there is any organization that would like to meet with Delegate Heimall and myself, please give my office a phone call. What we'll do is set up a meeting with you at the local library, whichever's close to that organization, to be able to meet with you. And sometimes the public wants to have some one-on-one, and we'll do that as well. So, we're trying to be as open as we can, but we also take into consideration, everybody is busy and having lots and lots of meetings. Senator Edwards blessed his soul because he's been able to have all these meetings and get them all done, and I can tell you, trying to fill his shoes, I'll never fill his shoes, but boy, have I felt that the souls are often thin because he's been really, really going up and down the district. So, with that, Delegate Heimall?
Yeah, I just checked the calendar. That meeting, is it eight?
Eight.
Eight, and it's in the G if we're more than that. Well, first of all, thanks for having us here today. As Senator McKay said, the budget situation at this point looks pretty challenging. He mentioned, I think they're looking at three options to deal with the deficit. He mentioned one is borrowing more money for capital projects. I think they're also looking at potentially increasing some taxes or fees to generate more revenue, and also maybe use the rainy day fund to help pay, I think there's $2.5 billion in the rainy day fund. That's more than they're required to have by law, so that he has some flexibility to use that, to use that money. I think one of our challenges that Senator McKay and I have, in Senator Edwards' last session, he was able to get legislation through that set aside her budget at $50 million for, I think it was called the Western Maryland Economic Infrastructure Fund. That was from Allegheny here from Western County. It was $10 million a year for five years, and we've gotten so far, is it 20 or 30 million?
We've got 20 million.
So, I think one of our challenges is to try to keep $10 million coming for the next FY in the budget, when there's a, when they're facing a deficit like they're facing right now, that I'm concerned that could be something that they might try to cut. So, one of my priorities is to try to protect that so we can keep that money coming. I think last week, the Republican Caucus from the House and the Senate both came up with, I think it was called a Public Safety Package, and it was some proposed legislation that Senator McKay referred to some of it. But it, all of it, to me, it was kind of common sense. It just made a lot of sense, and so I'd like to do what I can to help support that legislation to get those bills passed. Obviously, the other thing that we want to try to do is on local bond initiatives. It's going to be tough this year with the budget situation being what it is, to get local bonds. They're essentially grants. However, even with the tough budget situation, I'm confident there will be some of those, and hopefully, we'll be able to get some of those. In fact, you're asking for one of those, for the fairgrounds, so that's something else that we're going to have to.
Don't spend the money.
Yes. And one of the things that we're working on right now is, there was a million dollars, there was $450,000 in the FY '23 budget for the Garrett College to put on an artificial surface for a combined baseball soccer field. It was 450 in '23, and it's supposed to be 550 in '24. Well, the 550 that was pre-authorized in the '24 budget isn't in there. So, the college has already completed the project. They spent, they used $550,000 out of their contingency money to complete the project. So, we're working to try to get that money put back into next year's budget to reimburse the college for the money they spent to finish the project. So, that's a lot of money for Garrett College. That's one of our priorities, is trying to get that. I do want to compliment Senator McKay because he's gone after his way to keep me informed and keep me involved and let me know what he's working on and trying to work together to get things done. So, I just want everybody to know, we have a, what I think is a very good relationship, and we're going to do, it's going to be a tough session, but I'm looking, I'm actually looking forward to it this year. I think it's a big challenge, but I think we're going to do well. So, thank you for your time.
We definitely will pump up our weight, and since I weigh a lot, that's going to be pretty good for me.
Sounds good. Sounds good. We do have some requests. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Knoll to make those presentations on behalf of the county, and then Debbie is going to talk from the Liquor Control Board with some requests that they have. So Kevin, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, so we have a relatively short list. We have three requests and a request for a legislative bond. Our first one is to make an update to the Garrett County Code of Ordinance. That's section 30 dash, or 30.21. It's a bids and contracts. Our request is to change the requirements for bidding from $25,000 to $50,000. And this request will put us in line with the State of Maryland Policies on Procurement. As the cost of going up, it's pretty easy to get to $25,000. So, anything under 25, anything under $50,000 would still require three written bids, but anything over $50,000 would require a advertising for that bid. Our second request is to introduce legislation to authorize a Deep Creek Lake Vegetation Management Study. Specifically, we're requesting that this study determine, it's a study to determine the impact on the management and spread of invasive and nuisance submerged aquatic vegetation, as well as the impact of the shallow waters would have on the deposit of erosion. So, we're requesting that the Brookfield, who manages the lake, be required at certain times, under certain circumstances, to lower the level, and then DNR would be required to do a study on the effect of aquatic invasive species, as well as shoreline erosion. It would be for a five-year period, and this information would then be used to, as the permits come up for renewing on the next permit cycle. Our third request is actually from Sheriff Bryson Myers. The sheriff has requested that the county repeal the salary study that's currently required for the sheriff's department, and that the salary of the sheriff be set at 80% of the salary of the state's attorney's office for Garrett County. The majority of the state, the majority of the counties in the state already do this. Their sheriff's salaries are tied to a percentage of the state's attorney salaries, and the sheriff has requested is be tied to 80% of the state's attorney salaries. Any questions on the legislative?
Number two, the Deep Creek Lake Vegetation Management Study. I know it's proposed that be paid.
Out of the state-like, state-like management.
Do we have any idea what the goal of that is?
I do not. We believe that.
Depending on your proposal due for the sheriff, I know I'm one of appropriations committees, so some of these things come to appropriations, and other counties have done the same thing. And it's internal to the county, doesn't cost the state any money, so.
Correct.
I don't think it's going to have any problem with that one, or even the first one, it's kind of a housekeeping thing.
Right, yes.
The second one, I wouldn't think it'd be a problem, but it's only one that would be any kind of question.
And I tend to believe that it's necessary, because when the application does come up, we'd not need to have done the legwork.
Yes.
And give MBE, DNR, everybody involved the information, so.
Well, the state's making an investment as well with the dredging project. I would think they would want all the information they could get surrounding all of that stuff to have a full picture of what's going on in the lake.
Correct. One of the, I know it's not necessarily a request of yours alls, but one of the things that I'm trying to do, the skate lakes funding, has expired, and we're trying to get that to not be sunsetted, but actually be a line item in the budget that would happen all the time.
That would be.
We're trying to get a list of all the senators and delegates that actually have lakes in their particular districts, and try to make it so that it would be a cosponsor on both the House and the Senate by everybody that's affected by that. So, there is predominantly a lot of money that goes to Deep Creek Lake for that, but there are other entities, like in Montgomery County, like Lake Pardella, that are benefited from that, and we need to get that funding as a permanent line item. So, we're going to continue that as well.
And our final request is a legislative bond initiative. This is for the Garrett County Agricultural Fair. As you're aware, they operate the Garrett County Fairgrounds, and there's a need to replace the two quants at Hunts that they use for the exhibit and displays throughout the years, just down from the new exhibit hall. These buildings really deteriorated and have reached the end of a useful life. So, our request is, we estimate about $290,000 for the structures, plus the site work and construction. So, we're requesting consideration for a legislative bond in the amount of $250,000, and the county would be willing to match that bond.
One of the things that came out in the past couple years when it comes to legislative bond initiative, they are not requiring the matches like they used to. It's just, you know, but then they're wrong. The state always likes, and that's a plus.
Plus, and that's what I was going to ask you.
So, it's definitely a plus that, hey, you guys, you don't have skin in the game.
Right.
But it's not necessarily required anymore. So, that has actually helped out some of our smaller organizations.
Sure.
So, but it definitely helps check the box.
Would this be a local bond initiative? Or would it be?
Yeah, it would be a local bond option.
Or it's compromise.
If there's a better, if there's a better way to do it, I mean, just let me know. We can, we'll submit it however is appropriate.
Well, even if it's $200,000 or $150,000, whatever.
Bottom line is, it needs done.
Right.
Right. We'll see what we can do to get you something. $250,000 would be nice.
Yes.
But, as I started off, it's going to be a tough year, and there's going to be other people and all that kind of stuff. So, you should read a book to my kids about dream, dream big, big. And so, we'll dream big on the 250, if we can get to $50,000 or $200,000.
It's a start.
It would be happy.
Whatever help you can provide would be appreciated.
Absolutely.
Before I turn this over to Debbie, I would like to add one more thing. It's not on your sheet, but I think you might have talked to the superintendent of schools as you walked in the door. I did bring up at Mako two weeks ago, when I was down there, the issue with Blueprint that it's hard to understand, it's hard to explain, but it, to me, is low-hanging fruit that could be an easy victory, because I don't think you're going to get any blowback. All of Mako board seemed to understand and support what I was saying to the teachers' union leadership, who was open and understanding to the request. Noncommittal, I want to be very upfront about that, but they agreed with the assessment. So, the point in Blueprint that I want to draw your attention to is the student-centered funding part of the blueprint. So, basically, what it says is each school's worth a certain amount of money, depending on the student makeup of that school. And if it's, more kids in that school are under the poverty line, that school's worth more government money. More minority students in a school, more government money. More special education students in a school, more government money. All that makes sense. The studies that were done on student-centered funding and the research that was done on it were for schools that were 500 students or more. We only have one school in Garrett County that has more than 500 students. The problem is, what student-centered funding does to the local school board is it restricts their ability to fund the schools in the best necessary manner, because the state's saying each school's supposed to get X amount of money. So, to fix that, what my request would be, and I think the superintendent's request and what people that I've talked to statewide seem to think makes sense, is to exempt schools that are less than 500 students from that mandate. The reason it should be relatively easy sell, and I get the politics of everything, is that it doesn't cost the state any money, it doesn't restrict any money going to the school system. The school system's still going to get the exact same amount of money. It's not going to cost the state or the locals any more money. Really, what it would do would be to give the school board more flexibility in how they spend that allocation to schools that don't meet that 500-student threshold. And when you look at a school like we have, like a Swan Meadow, that's at 40 students, give or take, or Route 40, that's under 100 students, or Friendsville, it's just over 100 students, and all of our, Crowell, and we've got a lot of small schools here, and we're trying very hard to maintain them the best we can. It makes it more difficult when the state says you need to pull money out of that school, even though you're really not funding that school a whole lot of money, because there's only a handful of kids there anyway. So, I understand the thought process. I think we all understand the thought process on how they're trying to make sure schools get what they need, but when you get to small schools, it doesn't make the same sense, if you understand what I'm saying. So, anything that you all could do, I think you would get a lot of support from the other small districts that have small schools like we do. And again, it doesn't cost anybody any money, it doesn't take money from the school system, it just gives them more flexibility in how they can spend it.
So, we're talking to your fellow board members at Mako and that kind of stuff. Is that something that they thought that they would be working on, or?
That's not going to be a Mako initiative, but I believe that they would support a bill, you know, based on those thoughts, that I think they would be overall supportive. And again, when we talked with the teachers' union, they certainly understood it, and at least on the surface, they said, yeah, this makes some sense, and they might be able to maybe support. I don't think any of those groups are going to go out of their way to sponsor the bill or anything, but I think they wouldn't fight one if it came through. And maybe even get support in some respect.
So, you're proposing to waive the requirement for, the weighted student funding for schools under 500 students?
Yes. Yes. That would be, that would be my request, for, at least for you guys to do some research on, to see if that's something that might get some traction.
So, would it make sense to take a smaller number, or not? If, I mean, what would, what number would work for the ten schools that don't have 500 people?
Well, I, I think that's the point, like...
We just need to give them the...
We, we would like to give the schools that don't have 500 students statewide more flexibility in how they fund those schools. I think the superintendent may have a different opinion than me, she knows more about it than I do, but, uh, I, my thought would be, because the studies on student-centered funding were done at the 500-plus mark, the rationale to exempt those under 500 students would be they fall outside of what the research was to do that.
Okay.
So, if you went in and said, we wanna exempt schools under 200 students, or, I, I think the question from other legislators would be, where did you pull that number from? At least on the 500 number, you could say, from what we understand, most of the research was 500-plus, so this would...
I don't, I literally don't know as much about this as Senator McKay, or you certainly, the superintendent, but I do know, from being on appropriations and hearing the chair talk about this, that there's, there's a lot of reluctance to make any changes to the blueprint. So, tell me, here's what I'm thinking, maybe it doesn't make sense. If you say exempt schools with 500 or fewer, that's a lot of schools. That's more schools than if you said exempt schools that have 200 or fewer students.
Correct, I see what you're saying, yes.
So, I'm saying the impact in terms of changes would be less, so I, I guess...
I understand you're putting your question a little bit better now, I mean...
And, and so, what, those 10 schools that don't have 500, what's the max enrollment of any of those 10 schools?
475.
What was that?
The Southern Middle School is ours, and Broadford Southern Middle School and Southern High School are our three biggest schools, all the rest of them are 200-some less.
And I'm, I'm not proposing, we asked you this, when it comes time, did we have to negotiate or...
Right.
So, what's after Broadford, what's the next one after Broadford?
Yoclades, B3, 300, Accidents, less than 200, Grantsville's less than that, so, you, you have...
I, I do, I do.
And I don't know the size of the other schools statewide, um...
That's what they were...
I, I can tell you, most high schools have more than 500 students. I know Northern, at one point, was the seventh smallest school, high school in the state, I think now they might be ninth, but a lot of those schools now are also like seed schools and some other things that aren't necessarily just general open public schools.
Be a magnet.
Uh, right, there, there's different things, but most just community high, regular high schools, or you're gonna see, are probably more than 500.
And it may be worth us to craft it in such a way that, um, we basically describe rural schools.
Yes.
So, if this high school falls in a rural designation, then they wouldn't have to apply that 500.
What counties would have total enrollment of less than, or...
It may be that, but it also may just be legislation, counties locals, uh, located on the western end, like the eastern shore, and southern Maryland, or something like that. We can, we can, we can craft it in such a way that it only affects those schools, and so the larger schools, or those who don't want the blueprint being changed, um, it wouldn't affect them. So, we, we can, we can, we can work on that, try to figure out...
Just, just to wrap it up, one, one last question, then, so, um, the state gives you X amount of money to run the schools?
Correct.
And so, we're talking about how that money they give you is distributed by school now?
Correct, yeah, basically, yes. The allocation would not change, we're not asking to change.
So, the 7500 dollars a kid, or whatever it is...
Would be the same.
No matter how many minorities or special ed, or whatever else you have?
Yeah.
It's just, so you take, potentially, you're taking from one school to give to a, to another?
Kinda, yeah. I mean, it, it really, that, a- at the end of the day, that's what it boils down to, but the, the, and, and from a baseline, I can see where people would question that, but the, in the reality of it is, not all the schools and not all the communities are the same in Garrett County, so I'm assuming that would be statewide, and therefore, a one-size-fits-all model doesn't necessarily fit. So, to pull $5,000 from school A may not have an impact at all on school A, but it might have a significant impact on school B that you're moving that $5,000.
So, does that apply to, it, it used to be, the state was 7500, and the county is 70, did it still that, 7500?
The, the blueprint changed the formula that each kid is worth a different amount of money, based on the socio-economic demographic background of the child.
That's from the state?
So, yes.
But you have to match, the county has to match?
Correct, correct. So, student A may be worth $15,000, where student B might be worth 7500, just depending on who and...
And to me, the way that we would sell it, is that by having a smaller stack running a particular school, and the longevity of the stack being there, and the dollar amounts...
You hit the nail right, that's exactly, you hit the nail right on the head, that's it.
That's, that's how we sell it. It's like, look, are you, you want us to encourage to get rid of our educators?
That's exactly the point.
And have inexperienced educators?
Yeah, so...
We understand why they were trying to do what they did, but inadvertently, they're working against the seasoned educator, because we can't...
That's exactly it.
...meet the requirements, so...
Dr. McCartney, did you wanna add anything to that?
Well, and, Senator McKay, we hit it very well, and yet, in those schools, um, in a rural area, teachers become very attached to the school community, so you want them to stay there. They begin to connect with the parents and people in the community. Um, we've also, at different meetings, and I mentioned this to, um, our delegation, have been advocating for, if the blueprint can't be changed, um, and I hope it can be, at least allow us to apply for a waiver, and explain our particular situation, and why it doesn't work in our particular area. Um, and I've had some hope through the AIB, which is the agency that is really implementing the blueprint, that that might be available to us at some point. But it is for Garrett County right now, one of the harder parts of the blueprint, to, to look for, to, to implement.
Yeah, well, what would be really great, we got an email from you to us, I mean, I know we've got a piece of paper, but really, help us with the framework of where, where maybe we may be putting this waiver in.
Okay.
Um, that, that will help us to, when we contact the bill drafter, we'll get the right one.
All right, that will be forthcoming.
I've, I've always learned that as, as long as we're knocking on the correct door, we have a better success.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. McCartney. All right, Debbie, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you.
You gave him two, right? We'll make sure Larry gets one.
All right, so, um, I'm Debbie Austin, I'm administrator to Garrett County Board of Licensed Commissioners, also known as Liquor Control Board of Garrett County, and I thank you for this time to present their legislative requests. We have a request from our Deep Creek Art and Wine Festival Committee to allow them to also do, um, bourbon or whiskey sampling, so we have to establish a Garrett County Beer, Wine, and Liquor Festival. There's a draft copy of the proposed language of the bill, specifics on the fees and the quantities and serving, amount of serving sizes will be, um, held, handled by our local rules and regs. Um, they're, they're trying to capture more people to attend these events, and this was what they thought would help, it would be a very limited tasting, would not be any type of all-day unlimited, it'd be premium tickets, um, specific, um, attraction to the event in, as an add-on to the regular festival. Um, we also have some corrective language requests for the considerations we've proposed. The first one is housekeeping. Last year, we amended the hours for Sunday sales, and it's not consistent throughout Title 21 for Garrett County, so we'd like to do a review, and in those areas where it may be still references the later time, to amend those sections. Residency requirement, Garrett County falls under the general statute of the Title in Division One, which states that, at the time of application, at least one applicant must be a resident of the jurisdiction in which they apply. The board would like to consider an amendment and have a specific section entitled 21 for Garrett County that may allow for a county representative similar to a resident agent, um, is what, what they're discussing there. There'll be an amendment to, uh, request for an amendment to Title 21, specific for Class B beer licenses, Class B beer and wine licenses, these are typically licensed, um, for on-premise. The wording, um, we wanted to mimic what's in the Beer, Wine, and Liquor License, which reads hotel, motel, restaurant, or recreation. So, we would like if somebody, um, did not want beer, wine, and liquor, that the recreation side of it is included. Best example was the, um, event at Askew last year, with the theater, um, it's just a limited event, and it's more recreation, it's not, doesn't meet the other, um, criteria. Another amendment would be to alcoholic beverages, Article 21, 22, 02, um, the transfer of a license. Last year, we changed our transfer of a license to when a license is considered expired, and, um, the Alcohol, Tobacco, Cannabis Commission legal, uh, person recommended that we maybe add a conversion clause. A conversion clause is if a license changes every time, so say, um, we had a license that, we changed the wording for a Class B, or it gets transferred with an upgrade. So, that's my take on the conversion clause, Tom Akris was not available to confirm that, but that, that's the, um, comparison to other jurisdictions on the conversion clause. Final one would be to amend alcoholic beverages, Article 21, 28, 02. This would, our maximum penalty currently set at 3,000, and the board requested that it increase to 5,000. Um, we would request that these bills all be combined as one bill, cross filed, and called the Garrett County Alcoholic Beverages Act of 2024, and the legislation to be effective July 1st, 2024. On the amended corrective language, I will work with the legislative, um, draft writers and the board on final verbiage, um, but this is our, kind of our sample, quick summary of where we'd like to go.
Okay. Well, well, number five, the increase in maximum fine is 3,000 to 5,000, is that after some kind of offenses, it's not the first of offenses?
Um, that should be just in any fraction of the article itself. On our sales-to-minors, we have our own guideline, it's in our local rules and regs, so this would be a, a general, um, fine along with likely suspension or letter.
Is it discretion of the board then?
Correct, yes.
Thank you. And, uh, there's precedent for this, and other counties are mostly...
Uh, our fines, one of the lowest, even at 5,000, we're still probably one of the lowest, um, for example, like Montgomery County probably starts off on a $20,000 fine, on a, maybe a sales-to-minor offense, so, um, we are one of the lower jurisdictions, which might show that we don't have as many reasons to fine and suspend.
I don't have any questions, so, it's a problem, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Debbie.
The liquor board has two meetings in December, so if there's any, um, specific language, I will get that out of draft, but I'll work with the legislative writers in your office.
So, yeah, I, um, Sam Lawrence in my office is my legislative director.
Okay.
And so, um, the exciting thing about him is he's getting married in December, so we wanna get this done quicker than, if he's gonna go on his honeymoon, and then this thing called Christmas, and, so, December's almost kinda out. So, I'll get this to him tomorrow.
Okay.
And he'll call in the bill drafter, and all that kind of stuff, get working with it.
Perfect.
And then we'll put your information down as some of the, that could be contacted and all that kind of stuff.
Thank you.
So, get the framework going, and if it's okay, we'll be, we'll request the cross file for you, so, we'll, we'll put this in place tomorrow, so...
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Debbie.
Or I should say, tomorrow is the day before Thanksgiving, yeah.
Monday.
Sam's gonna work on it.
All right.
I don't know how long after us it will be.
Sounds good, thank you.
Uh, Senator Delegate, do you have any other questions about anything?
I'll thank you.
Okay, uh, I do wanna thank you both again, and, uh, reiterate what Delegate Heimball said, it's nice to, to have your ear and the support, and to have you come here, and, just for the general public, that these guys have always just been a phone call away, and it's much appreciated, so. If you need any help from us during the session, uh, let us know, testimony or, or anything like that, let us know, we'd be happy to help.
I may need a loan.
Call the cabinet. Um, we do have, uh, two announcements. Um, first, the next public meeting is Monday, December the 4th, that'll be here, beginning at four o'clock. Uh, the second announcement, and I'll just read this, "Due to the resignation of Mr. Cody Brill from the Garrett County Board of Education pursuant to the Maryland Education Code, the Board of Garrett County Commissioners shall appoint a qualified individual to fill any vacancy in an elected member's position on the board for the remainder of the term, and until the successor is elected and qualifies, the Board of Commissioners will accept letters of interest with resume for the District One representative of the Garrett County School Board. Candidates must reside in District One." Uh, we'll take those letters of interest and resumes to us here. Uh, all documents must be received by three o'clock on Friday, December the 15th. Uh, Board of County Commissioners will review the candidates, conduct interviews, and hopefully have somebody seated for the January Board of Education meeting. Uh, so, if you, if, uh, anybody out there is interested in the now-vacated, uh, District One Board of Education seat, uh, you can apply, uh, with the resume, and if you have questions about that, feel free to reach out to Mr. Knoll, or any of us, and we'll be happy to, uh, try to answer any questions that you may have, but it, it, it is a district seat, and it must, you must live in District One to be considered. Having said all of that, uh, most importantly, from Commissioner Savvy, myself, and Commissioner Tishnall, we hope everybody has wonderful Thanksgiving, um, and does anybody have any questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, we will take a motion to adjourn.
So who?
Meeting adjourned, thank you all very much.